Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cablecast Public Hearing for Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, relative to Bill 2024-1181. My name is Deborah Gross. I am the Representative for District 7 on City Council. Will the clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 1181, Petition from the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh Requesting a Public Hearing Before City Council Relative to the Recent Installation of the Bike Lane on Stanton Avenue. The petition is valid in accordance with the Home Rule Charter.
Thank you. For the record, we are joined today by Councilmember Kahari Mosley. Are there other members online by any chance? Members may be watching or they may be joining us shortly. Our next order of business will be testimony from our registered speakers. Please give your name and address or just neighborhood name for the record. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the council. Our first speaker is Lorraine Brown, and followed by Lorraine Brown will be Sean McKillop.
My name is Lorraine Brown. I am a disabled property owner on Stanton Avenue. The first day that when I seen the bike lane being installed, it threw me for a loop because I had no knowledge of this happening on our street. The impact it plays on my life is tremendous. I now go shopping and someone in my family or family member or friend have to retrieve my packages out of my car. The crosswalk now is up a block and up a block or either down two blocks in order for me to cross the street. I also have a disabled aunt who's in a wheelchair. I can't even explain what I have to do with her to try to get her to my vehicle. Every day, there is a delivery truck, Uber Eats, or FedEx, the services that we all use. They pull up on my sidewalk or one of my neighbor's sidewalks to do whatever it is they need to do. As a city owner, we are responsible for repairing that sidewalk, not to mention the traffic is backed up. I myself had put in in 2022 for a parking disability parking in front of my home for my aunt, who I at that time was a caretaker giver, I'm sorry caregiver for her. I was denied because I didn't have the plate, although PennDOT recognized me and I had the actual placard. Since that time, I put in one for myself in 2024 and again denied because quote unquote, this is now considered a restricted area. I don't see any signs saying it's a restricted area. Can someone please explain? I would just like for the city or DOMI or whoever's responsible for this to please just put Stanton Avenue back to the original way it was. Also, my block of Stanton Avenue, it's very small in dimensions compared to the other ends of Stanton Avenue. I'm between Chislet and Negley Avenue. Those dimensions are very, very small. Also, with me being disabled, even if I ride as a passenger getting out on the opposite side of the street, I don't know what you call the proper term of those bike blocks, that's an accident waiting to happen. Sometimes you don't see them, sometimes you just, it's horrible. It is absolutely horrible. It is really impacting my life. Again, I just wish someone would reconsider doing this and had given us more notice of this. I don't go to hearings. A first-class piece of mail would have been great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sean McKillop, followed by Carolyn Krantz. Do we have Sean McKillop online or in the audience? If not, we can try him again later. We have next Carolyn Krantz, followed by Armin Sami. Do we have Carolyn Krantz? If not, we have Armin Sami, followed by Abe Stuckey. Do we have Armin? Thank you.
Try and go technology here. Sorry. All right. Hi, my name is Armin Sami. I'm a Lawrenceville resident and the Chair of Better Streets Lawrenceville. I want to acknowledge the fact that I'm here to listen to my neighbors and their issues, and so far only one person has spoken, so it's a little odd for me to be responding to issues that I haven't heard, though I have heard some real issues come up. I think we need to figure out how to address those, especially delivery trucks parking on the sidewalks. I hope that throughout this conversation today, we can find resolutions that don't involve the removal of the bike lane or at least be open-minded to different solutions on both ends to make sure all of our neighbors can get home safely, away from home safely, and especially for our neighbors in wheelchairs. I think that is of utmost importance. I want to share my experience getting up Stanton Avenue. Before the bike lanes were installed, it was pretty scary to be using Stanton Avenue. I would be in front of traffic, there'd be cars on the side, and people would try to pass me around blind corners. When that happened, if they saw an uncommon car, they would realize and swerve back coming within inches of me. It was a pretty scary experience for me and I assume pretty frustrating for drivers to be stuck behind a slow biker. Now that there are bike lanes, I'm a little calmer, I think, once I get into the bike lane, which isn't the whole Stanton Avenue, but once I'm in the bike lane, I'm sure if you felt my pulse, it would decrease. I can go a little slower. I'm just less stressed when I have access to a separated way to get around. I don't own a car. I know a lot of my neighbors don't own a car, and so the bike lane is my mode of transit because the bus access throughout Stanton is not great. I also want to speak on behalf of some upcoming potential changes to the schools, specifically Wool Slayer and Arsenal may close in the coming years, we don't know for sure, but if they close, a lot of those kids will be sent to Sunnyside. And if that happens, that will impact a lot of my neighbors who don't have a car, who are trying to bike their kids to Sunnyside. The bike lanes on Stanton and around Stanton really give a safe passage for parents getting their kids to Sunnyside. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Abe Stuckey next, followed by Joe Nury.
My name is Abe. I live in Highland Park, less than a block away from the Stanton Avenue Phase 2 improvements. I ride a bicycle in Pittsburgh as my main mode of transportation. In November 2021, my neighbor Will Teason was struck and killed by a vehicle on Stanton, at Stanton and North St. Clair Street. He was also a biker who lived in Highland Park, about a block away from Stanton Avenue. I support the Stanton Avenue Phase 2 improvements as they have made it possible for people in our neighborhood not to fear for their lives when biking or walking along the street. The improvements have even made it safe for drivers turning onto the street as the bike lanes and bumpouts have improved sightlines. Just this month, DOMI collected post-construction data for Stanton Avenue, which they just posted on the Phase 2 Engage page. The percent of drivers speeding was cut in half from 68% to 34%. Change is hard, but the previous street configuration was literally deadly. I never want to attend, I never want to have to attend another memorial bike ride for a neighbor who was struck and killed by traffic violence. The bike lanes and other safety improvements bring us one step closer to Vision Zero, where no one in the city is killed as a result of traffic violence. I commend Councilwoman Gross and Councilman Mosley for their commitment to making our streets safer and look forward to future improvements in East Liberty and Highland Park. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Next, we have Joe Nury, followed by Jack Alito. Do we have Mr. Nury? Next, we have Mr., we have Jack Alito, followed by David Anglero. Do we have Mr. Alito? Thank you.
Hello, members of the council and public. I'm Jack Alto, and I live in Lower Lawrenceville. I'm a community member in favor of safety and accessibility for everyone, whether they're passing through or using this critical infrastructure every day. Previously, I've biked up Stanton Avenue, and the last two years, I've driven through more often to visit friends in the neighborhood. I think the net, the new infrastructure is a net improvement, especially for reducing vehicles' speeds and providing clear dart demarcations where to expect bikes and pedestrians, which makes the road safer for everyone. I do support more crosswalks, and an important thing about lower vehicle speeds is that it makes the road safer. Speeding twice as fast doesn't cause twice the damage, it's closer to quadruple the damage, and that those higher speeds are disastrous for houses, pedestrians, and cyclists. There's all sorts of dangers on the road, and that even includes in the area lots of news reports of cars hitting buildings, which is ridiculous. So bringing the speeds down helps provide more safety for everyone. I'm in favor of preserving the new infrastructure, but adapting it to make sure it works for everyone, and that's especially important for accessibility, for those sightlines, for visibility, so that people know what to expect, fewer surprises. Maybe all those delivery trucks need a special delivery zone or something, because having them on the sidewalks is not a solution. That's, that's just very expensive for any repairs that come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Anglero, followed by Lauren Apt.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm sure Director Lucas is going to be watching this and the community members. My name's David Anglero. I'm with Green Edge Tech. I happen to live a couple blocks from the affected site down through Stanton. I don't think that I'm necessarily impacted directly in my area from parking issues, but what I do want to address here is like, you know, a lot of times I get into a conversation about how we're not, you know, this is not a culture issue, this is an education issue. And when we start to look at like this room right here, I've got bicyclists over here and community members over here, you know, so that kind of like takes away this whole conversation that it's not, it's not a culture issue. But when it comes to the community engagement that happened with DOMI and this, this debacle, there's no reason it should have gotten to this point. There's no reason that this many people signed a petition and more have been signing the petition, you know, and it just goes to show that they did not get to these people. And I have personally had conversations with Director Lucas on how you need to get those door-to-door knockings more efficient. You have to be able to get to those people. There are people from Stanton Avenue here that have signed this petition. You heard from one of them, and it just is very indicative of how DOMI handles these projects. They're acting like this, it's a checkbox, okay? I guarantee if any of these people had tax liens, they had utility shut-offs, they had any of those types of fees, fines, a court hearing for some violation from DOMI, I guarantee they would get in touch with them. If you had a cellphone person walking the streets trying to sell cellphones door-to-door, I guarantee those people, if they didn't get them the first time, they'd get them the second time, third time. All right, this is, this is like irresponsible, not to mention, if you look through that Phase 2 meeting, there are multiple opportunities for them to really talk about this. They talk about disabilities on that street, and they say, well, we'll rethink it. They talk about the fact that EMS is having trouble with the slots. I personally reached out to Deb Gross's office and DOMI and Kim Lucas and said, I nearly killed myself and my daughter coming up Stanton Avenue because the pedal hit the sidewall of the speed table. And still, they had not fixed them, even though they have addressed it. They addressed it, addressed not putting in a protected bike parking lane. You know what I'm saying? But here we are.
Thank you. If anybody is unable to finish the comments that they want to submit, you can also submit them to the clerk's office and they'll be sure to distribute them, just for your future Next, we have Lauren Apt, followed by David Baker.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Lauren Apt, and I started a group called Kidical Mass Pittsburgh. Kidical Mass wants to see more kids on bikes and more families biking together as recreation and as transportation. I'm here today to speak in support of the Stanton Avenue bike lane improvements, the improvement that it makes towards the mobility of families and children, both who live in the immediate area and people like myself who travel all over the city by bike. We rode here today in the nasty weather because it's our favorite way to get around and it's really efficient for us. So even though I don't live in the immediate area, I just, I really appreciate improvements like that, and I do live near some infrastructure improvements similar to the ones on Stanton Ave, and it really makes my, it really makes our mobility safer, and I really appreciate that. And I also have older children who do not interrupt my testimony at meetings like this. Hold on one second, you can say something at the very end. And they bike independently to and from school, and so these types of infrastructure really make it safer for kids, families, and kids on their own as well as they get older. Go ahead. You want to say your name?
My name is Alice, and I'm four, and I just turned four, and I don't know things. Still, I'm still smart.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. The next speaker is David Baker, followed by, I think it's Patrick Doyle. It's listed Doyle-Patrick, but I'm not sure which way it is. Do we have David Baker?
My name's David Baker. I'm a physician. I live in Shadyside. I commute to work on occasion. I bike recreationally three or four times a week. And I was unaware of the bike infrastructure on Stanton Avenue until one day, which, and I tend to go up Stanton on my way to Lawrenceville or the Strip at least two or three times a month, and I was pleasantly surprised to see how suddenly there's a safe corridor there in what is otherwise a fairly dangerous stretch of road. I mean, unfortunately, there's a long stretch, especially if you're going downhill back towards Shadyside, where I think cars routinely go 40 or 50 miles an hour. And I was pleasantly surprised that I could bring my kids on this, I could safely ride with others and not have to worry about cars, and I thought it was a huge improvement in connecting the different neighborhoods in Pittsburgh for commuters and cyclists like me. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Patrick Doyle, I believe, next, followed by Brad Quartuccio. Do we have Doyle-Patrick or Patrick Doyle? I'll move on. Do we have Brad Quartuccio, followed by Nancy Levine?
Hello, I'm Brad. I'm Morningside resident that drives, walks, and bikes on Stanton Avenue frequently with my six-year-old son, and the traffic calming has made it much safer crossing large intersections and riding out of the fray of traffic, and hasn't affected my driving experience besides reminding me to slow down in front of my own kid's school. I've lived in Morningside long enough to remember the doomsday traffic predictions for the impending Negley Ave bike infrastructure, how it never truly occurred, and how it has been transformative to riding out of the neighborhood. It is a night-and-day change, a massive improvement made obvious by the people using it day and night. I lived directly on Liberty Avenue when those bike lanes were painted years ago, and the predictions of not being able to unload groceries due to speeding bicycles never came to fruition there either. The Stanton Avenue improvements are on their way to being equally as transformative, connecting neighborhoods with no other direct route between to each other, to one of our premier city parks, and with two grade schools located less than a mile and a half apart on the bike lanes themselves. It's disheartening and insulting to read the comments of some neighbors circulating this petition that imply that those of us in our prime working years, living and raising children in the city of Pittsburgh, are somehow freeloaders for riding a bicycle or walking sometimes, not worthy of respect or safe passage. I daily drive a pickup truck and have no trouble with all of the bollards or driving between the white lines, and it tests my logic to hear people advocate for faster streets between grade schools while in the same breath admitting that they find the current bollards hard and confusing. To claim that there was no public input on this infrastructure is ludicrous, supported by years-old news stories, neighborhood postings, city-directed communications, and voters widely supporting candidates in favor of traffic calming. The traffic calming measures and bike path improvements that have happened in our city over the past decade-plus have made a measurable impact in slowing down drivers and connecting our city in safer and more manageable ways for those of us who choose to ride or walk even some of the time. Thank you for your time and supporting safe streets.
Thank you. Next, we have Nancy Levine, followed by Andrew Maraz. If you're online, you might have to unmute yourself. Do they have to do star six if they're on the phone or anything like that?
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
I thank City Council for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Nancy Levine. I'm retired family doctor. I live a few blocks from Stanton Avenue in Highland Park, and Stanton Avenue is my main route in and out of Highland Park. I've bike commuted for 50 years, that's 5-0. I guess you can calculate my age from that, even though you can't see me. I bike, walk, or bus to get around town, but mostly I bike. When I first started bike commuting in Pittsburgh, when I moved here in 1992, it felt scary to bike or walk. I had many close calls with cars and buses as there was no safe place to bike and drivers were not used to cyclists or pedestrians. We've made great progress in safety since I started bike commuting all those years ago. There is a critical mass of cyclists on the streets, so drivers are generally more aware of me on my bike. Bike lanes have given me a protected area to bike. I'm on Stanton Avenue on my bike at least twice a day, and it feels much safer than it did before the bike lanes were installed. I imagine drivers are happier also to have me out of the middle of the traffic lane. It also feels like motor vehicles travel at slower speeds on Stanton Avenue since the bike lanes were installed. I feel like this makes it safer for everyone, not just me as a cyclist. I don't want to go back to the old Stanton Avenue where I was competing for space on a street with speeding vehicles. I'm not insensitive to the issues bike lanes have posed to motor vehicle owners and hope there is a way around this problem that leaves the bike lane intact and keeps everyone safe. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrew Maraz, followed by Adam Gray. Do we have Mr. Maraz? Andrew Maraz? I'll go back to Andrew. Do we have Adam Gray, followed by Elizabeth Hopman?
Hello. I'm muted. Okay. Hi, my name is Adam Gray. I'm a resident of Stanton Heights. I do not own a car and walk and bike on Stanton Avenue daily. That, the new bike lane on Stanton, combined with the Neighbor Way on Euclid and the parking protected bike lane in Penn Circle redesign, have made my, my life so much easier and feel so much, I feel so much safer on my cycling commutes and grocery store trips. Prior to the traffic calming measures, I would rarely ride on Stanton past Chislet due to reckless driving and excessive speeding that still takes place on Stanton. Although lately, since the Phase 2 traffic calming has been implemented, I have noticed a real decrease in speeding and reckless driving on Stanton, although there are still people parking in the bike lanes continuously. I'm ashamed and disheartened by some of my neighbors who would like to remove some of these traffic calming measures, making their own neighborhood more dangerous for everyone, drivers, cyclists, and pedestrians alike. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Elizabeth Hopman, followed by Vincent Zhang. Do we have Elizabeth Hopman? No, maybe? We'll move on to Vincent Zhang, followed by Jessica Friedrich.
Hi, my name is Vincent Zhang. I am a resident of the Marshall Shadland neighborhood. I used to live in Morningside, and I have many friends and loved ones who live in the Stanton Heights neighborhood. So I travel in that area frequently. I own a car and a motorcycle. I also drive a van for work, and I also ride my bike to get around. Before those bike lanes went in, I basically tried to avoid Stanton as much as I could. I would frequently go up Chislet and Black Street just to not have to be on that stretch, regardless of what mode of transportation I was in. I actually forgot that the bike lanes went in, even though I had been to a few council meetings about that, but recently I was biking around with some friends and we went up Stanton through the bike lanes, and that was great because it was not a terrifying death trap. And even driving down Stanton, it feels a lot calmer because the streets are narrower, which means cars are more likely to be driving at or around the posted speed limit. I frequently have this experience driving around town where I'll try to drive at the speed limit, especially in like a dense residential neighborhood, but people want to drive 40 or 50 miles an hour for some reason. They'll get right up behind me and like flash their high beams, sometimes they'll cut into oncoming traffic to try to pass me. I don't know, people are impatient, they need to get where they're going. But when the streets are backed up, when traffic is slow, cars can't drive that fast. And when cars can't drive that fast, they don't cause as much damage when they hit other cars or buildings or people or other things that just, you know, exist in this world that we are all in together. So I think the bike lanes have definitely made a difference. It's certainly frustrating to have to drive slowly. It's frustrating to be stuck in traffic. It's frustrating to wait three or four light cycles before you can make that turn onto Negley, which is part of the reality now, but I personally would rather be frustrated than see more people get hit by cars. So thank you to everyone who has supported and advocated for those bike lanes. I think they've made my life a lot better, and I think they've made many other people's lives better.
Thank you. Next, we have Jessica Friedrich, followed by Adrian Hedge.
Hello, I'm online. This is Jessica. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I'm here today because I'm opposed to removing the bike lanes on Stanton Avenue. I live a few blocks off of Stanton on Morningside Ave, and I am primarily a car driver. I've lived here in Morningside for 18 years, and it's a big relief as a driver for me to have those clearly marked.
Jessica, I'm afraid we lost your feed.
Prior to the lanes being installed, I often saw people biking on Stanton. Hello? You can't hear me?
You did cut in and out, but we can hear you now.
Okay, please let me know if I cut out again. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. So prior to the lanes being installed, I often saw people biking on Stanton, and I was always concerned about possibly hitting them because of the curviness of that road, and there's a lot of blind turns on that road, and there was really no clear indication of where in the road they should be, and me as a driver, how far I should be from them. I drive on Stanton Avenue nearly every day, so as a driver, the bike lanes have made a real difference to me. In addition, I have a 15-year-old son who uses the bike lanes to get around the city. He can't drive yet. He regularly bikes on Stanton Avenue, and it makes me feel a lot better knowing that my teenager has those clearly marked lanes to ride there. The other reason that I'm speaking out now especially is because recently, just back in October- in October, over the course of two weeks, I witnessed both a biker and a pedestrian get hit by cars at the intersection right next to my house. That is a very quiet street. I live on Morningside Ave at the corner of Martha. It is not as busy as Stanton Ave, and on two separate occasions, I heard a sickening sound as I sat on my porch. It was absolutely gut-wrenching to hear the squeal of the tires and the cries from the people as they were hit and lying in the street. In both cases, the individuals were okay, but both were extremely scared. The drivers were sobbing, crying, and distraught. It can happen so quickly that our cars become destructive. So I really feel that anything that can help us as drivers to concentrate and keep everyone safe is a benefit to all. I also have an eight-year-old daughter who crosses these streets every day. She's learning to ride a bike, and I would hope that she could ride safely and walk safely in our neighborhoods. And finally, I want to share that I lost two close friends, two accidents on our streets. One, Susan Hicks, was biking home in Oakland when she was hit and killed by a car nearly 10 years ago. The other, Andy Fisher, was a doctor, helping out in a snowstorm on the side of the P.A. Turnpike and was struck by a vehicle and killed in front of his wife and two young children. I live with those losses every single day. Safety on our road is life or death, and bike lanes can save lives. So for the benefit of the bikers as well as the drivers in our community, I urge you...
Thank you. Next we have Adrian Hedge, followed by David Sog.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name's Adrian Hedge, and I live between Chislet Street and Negley Avenue, where the installation of a parking protected bike lane has had a negative impact on the residents. Just to be clear, we are not asking for bikers to not be protected, but for better planning and a reconsideration of the installation and how it was formatted. We do want bikers to be protected, but the way that this happened between Chislet and Negley does not work for everybody. Unfortunately, the residents directly affected were not contacted to discuss the project, receive information about the impact, or provide concerns that would arise. Although, whereas a meeting held in March, residents can't attend a meeting that they do not know about for a project they are not aware of. So RAINN has stated, "Our number-one concern here is the safety of our disabled and elderly neighbors and the position that this two-block installation has put them in. It has made it significantly harder for them to access their vehicles and schedule transportation. They now need to walk further to their transportation has put them at greater risk for being struck by a vehicle or bike." Again, traffic has increased significantly on the side streets and alleys as drivers are trying to avoid Stanton Avenue. It's taken away spots on Stanton Avenue for mail trucks, delivery vehicles, and scheduled transportations, all of which come by multiple times a day to park and complete their jobs safely. We also, as residents, have to park blocks away from our houses, which creates more pedestrians at risk on Stanton Avenue. The installation on the crosswalk of the crosswalk at Hethway was a great addition, but I still have yet to see a biker yield to my dog and I in the crosswalk. The installation of the speed humps was amazing because it does slow down the traffic, and I believe that the calming infrastructure should have been implemented before putting in a parking protected bike lane. Also, is there any regular cleaning or maintenance plan put in to effect to ensure that this doesn't happen? As currently, it is covered in leaves, and it's just not getting cleaned. Those barriers installed between the bike lane and the parking lane has created a tripping and falling hazard as they are low, and the black and white stripes completely blend into the street lines. Those driving lanes are significantly smaller in width, and drivers tend to ride the middle lane to avoid being so close to the park cars or sidewalks. And they are also dangerously close to the sidewalks where children walk to school. Also, the planning issue I have is the research done to assess our parking capacity and usage between Chislet and Highland. This was done on a Friday, May 5, 2023, between 1:00 and 3:00 p.m. The other study was done Monday, May 8, 2023, between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. As everyone can assume, most likely, people will not be at their houses and parking out their residence as they probably work outside of their house or after school they have to...
Thank you. There you go. As a reminder, you can submit further testimony to the clerk's office. Next we have David Sog, followed by Lisa Parker.
Good afternoon. I'm David Sog. I live in Highland Park on Wellesley Road and travel on Stanton almost every day by car or by bicycle, approximately 50/50. I feel safer with the traffic calming measures installed on Stanton Avenue. When I drive a car, it can be a little annoying to go over the speed humps and around flex posts, but the whole point is to slow things down just a bit to make it safer for everyone. These small annoyances are a part of the measures that create an outsized increase in safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. I especially appreciate this when I'm on a bicycle on Stanton. I pass the ghost bicycle of William Thiessen every day at the corner of Stanton and St. Clair. It's a reminder to all of us to observe the speed limit and drive with care, not trying to get around bikes or other cars whenever it seems there might be room. Traffic calming measures naturally create slower, more mindful driving. Each successive improvement to road safety, while it might feel inconvenient to drivers, will go a long way towards shifting the whole culture towards safer modes of transportation. Everyone benefits. Stanton Avenue is home to an elementary school which has children being delivered to and from it by car, bus, and on foot. Stanton also has one of the city's few remaining independent corner pharmacies, often with people who are older or disabled going there. The young and the old, whether mobility-impaired or fit bicycle riders, all benefit from having cars not go speeding down Stanton Avenue, sometimes blowing through stop signs or speeding up to make the light. I urge the council to maintain the measures installed on Stanton to make our neighborhood safe.
Thank you. Next we have Lisa Parker, followed by Alex Torek.
Hello, my name is Lisa Parker. I live in Highland Park. There are three reasons I support retaining the bike lanes and traffic slowing measures on Stanton Avenue. First, my husband rides his bike downtown to work most days. I want him to be safer. He's been hit by a car and his bicycle twice, once by a Highland Park resident rushing because she was late for work. The police pursued the hit-and-run, and she was ultimately apologetic and paid to repair his bicycle. The other time when he was hit, the driver didn't stop. My husband required surgery to repair his hand, and fortunately, he was able to continue working as a musician. Being forced to drive at or below the speed limit saves lives and livelihoods and prevents disabling pedestrians and bicyclists. Second, I drive past Dilworth School when I go to work. I worry about the safety of those children, and I observe others who evidently do not worry similarly. They drive too fast when there are children walking to and from school. Our car was hit at a stop sign at the corner of Stanton and North Sheridan when the driver went speeding through without stopping. Measures to make drivers move more slowly so that they may obey traffic signs improve the safety for all of us. Third, having safer streets along which people can walk their dogs and children and where they can ride bikes improves the atmosphere of the neighborhood. It will improve our property values when the neighborhood is known as livable and walkable, not a neighborhood with ghost bike memorials to riders hit by cars or with pedestrians who are afraid or who should be afraid to cross in intersections. Two people from the University of Pittsburgh, where I work, have ghost bike memorials because they were killed by cars while riding their bicycles. Anthropologist Susan Hicks on Forbes Avenue in Oakland, and a graduate of the law school where I work, William Thiessen, at the corner of Stanton and St. Clair. I want my husband to ride his bike to work, not have it turned into a memorial. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Alex Torek, followed by Laura Davidson-Brienza. Do we have Alex Torek? We'll move on to Laura Davidson-Brienza, followed by George Lowenstein.
Hello, my name is Laura Davidson-Brienza, and I work for the Environmental Charter School, or ECS, located in Garfield. The bike lane updates on Stanton between Chislet and Negley have been a game-changer for our middle-school cycling program at ECS. As part of our bike ECS curriculum in our phys ed classes, our sixth graders take neighborhood rides twice a week for 10 weeks each fall, with over 100 students participating each day of the program. We love riding through this neighborhood and are often greeted with warm welcomes, saying like, "That's so cool. Where are you headed? Keep on riding." A regular rate route takes us to Hethway, and to get back to school, we previously had to avoid Stanton Avenue, taking narrow back alleys where vehicles park and where bike infrastructure is non-existent. Since this fall, with the addition of the new bike lane on Stanton, our students can confidently ride along our route, seamlessly connecting to the Negley bike lanes on their way back to school within their PE class. As they ride, I love hearing the students yell out, "Into the bike lane," as we go from Hethway onto Stanton, and then yield to pedestrians when we head up to the bumped-out bus lane. They are learning a powerful message from these changes, that students and their bikes belong on our streets. These updates on this specific portion of Stanton Avenue are utilized regularly by our students at ECS. That's over 1,000 collective rides just this fall and just this portion of Stanton by our sixth graders alone, providing a safe route for them to learn and to engage in our community. In addition to our program during the school, a lot of our students and staff live in the neighborhood and commute as well. One is a wonderful eighth grader who wrote a statement for me to read today. He's on a previously scheduled field trip, which he was very excited about and couldn't make it, but he was planning to listen in, so hello, Isaiah, and I'm honored to share his words. I'm Isaiah, an eighth grader from Environmental Charter School, and I'd like to speak in favor of the bike lanes. Due to the fact that I had something important at school, I can't speak on this in person as much as I wanted to. So a month or two ago, while going home from school, I got in a bike accident on Black Street and it sent me to the ER. Stitches, tests, scans, all those things. The lack of bike lanes on Black Street made the bikes have to move along with traffic on Black Street, which is what caused me to get in the accident. The same thing could happen with other people should the bike lanes not be respected and maintained. Cars parked in the bike lane could cause people to go into streets, which is a risk because there is traffic coming from both directions. As a kid at ECS and completely with green options of movement, if Pittsburgh wants to stand by its livable city motto, it should keep its bike lanes unblocked, accessible, and existing. Stanton is a street that a lot of people consistently use for their jobs and school, including some people who use electric or regular bikes. Pittsburgh is a city with many side streets where people are able to park. Sacrificing important infrastructure for the sake of parking spaces seems ill-informed. I'll submit his written, the rest, the last sentence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have George Lowenstein, followed by Tamba Azaya Niandemo.
Hi, I'm George Lowenstein, and I live in Highland Park, and I've commuted to Carnegie Mellon since 1990. And like a lot of bicyclists, my commute has been getting better over time. The thing that was really transformational was the improvements to Ellsworth, but getting to Ellsworth has always been problematic. After the Negley bike lane was put in, it could have gotten better, but the problem was getting to Negley isn't easy, and that's because Stanton was so much of a problem, including the grim reminder of the memorial to the bicyclist who was killed by a car. And it hasn't been very long, but since the transformation of Stanton, that's really transformed my commute. Now I have a way to get from Highland to Negley, and most of my commute is now on either bike lanes or bike-protected lanes. And I've noticed that cars are not only driving more slowly, but they seem to also be behaving in a more considerate fashion, as if the changes have led them to think more about what's going on with bicycles. So like many of the other people testifying here today, I'd be very, very sad if these improvements were reversed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Tamba Azaya Niandemo, followed by Patrick O'Brien. Do you have to unmute yourself? Do we have Tamba Azaya Niandemo? I'm not sure. If you're there, I'll give you a second. If you're away from your computer, I will kind of circle back through these names at the end of the registered speakers. I'll move on to Patrick O'Brien, followed by Jeremiah Miller.
I'm Patrick O'Brien. I live on Stanton Avenue in very, very upper Lawrenceville. So I ride that corridor on Stanton a lot, especially from Negley, up the Big Stanton Hill, and down a little bit to the other side. I also drive a car around Pittsburgh a lot, so I'm both a driver and a biker. I understand the demands and complaints and annoyances of being a driver and a biker. Like a lot of the other bikers here, I really like bike lanes. They really help me feel safe and be safe. I notice that especially in my body as I'm literally biking through Pittsburgh. I can notice that when I'm in a bike lane, I'm calmer, my heart's steadier. I can show up to work, where I work as a therapist in private practice, and be more grounded, so I can help support other people as they're trying to stay grounded as well. I really appreciate this chance to learn a little bit more information here in signing up to comment and come here. It was hard to learn exactly what the complaints and concerns were from the side that wants some of these changes reversed. I appreciate the commenters, the residents close to Chislet who have shared what their concerns are. It sounds like you guys don't want bikers to not be safe and that you are mainly concerned about especially the disabled residents and having accessibility to their cars. I share that concern. When I signed up to comment, my initial reactivity, which I often do, was like, "Bikes are good, and people are against bike lanes, and I'm going to come tell them that they're wrong." And then I was driving through that corridor from Negley through Chislet, and it was a moment I saw who I assumed was a mother carrying a baby in a car seat to her car. She had something in both hands, and she was really doing the kind of hip thing and walking hard and trying to get to the car. And I thought, "Oh, that looks really hard." I don't live there, and I don't know what that experience is. I empathize with the residents in that area who are displaced and who are trying to go about their probably hard lives like all of us and make it a little easier. I want bikers to be safe in Pittsburgh. That's really valuable to me, and I also want those residents to have access to their cars that helps their day go easier. I don't know, as a non-civil engineer, if there's a better way to do that. I can tell you, as both a biker and a driver, when I drive through that corridor, I say, "This looks a lot clunkier than all the other additions in lots of the other streets of Pittsburgh." So I don't know what else can be done to satisfy both biker safety and resident accessibility, but I hope that a little more thought is given to all the concerns and needs here. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Jeremiah Miller, followed by Gregory Murray.
Thanks for having us today. My name is Jeremiah Miller. I live in Stanton Heights. I moved there in 2022, before the bike lanes were installed. And the first few months here, I didn't own a car. Well, I owned a car. It just wasn't available. The circumstances in which I moved here, I did not have access to my car. So I had purchased a bike to bike through the city, and it worked out great. I was doing chores, like things are accessible within the city. However, it was kind of frightening, sharing a road with cars that were off and speeding. And I remember I signed a petition, I believe in that summer, and was really surprised when all of these initiatives took off and happened, what felt like almost instantaneously compared to like other traffic improvements I've seen in elsewhere, other places that I've lived. But as soon as they were installed, it really improved my life. They also convinced my partner to ride with me sometimes. Both of us share an... Both of us share an opinion that a lot of cars are either speeding, they're not paying attention, or it's just, you know, we are forced into the traffic ourselves, and that's difficult and frustrating as a driver. I also own a car. But when we enter the bike lanes, like, one, she'll come with me now, but although there's also just a sense of relief, a sense of relief in that, like, we're out of traffic, and the little bit of a vindication that I chose the right place to live. So the bike lanes for us are a great start. They're not perfect. You know, there are parts of Stanton where the traffic is still not calmed, especially on the downhill section, and when walking certain parts of Stanton Avenue that haven't had any traffic calming measures, it is hard to cross because of a lack of crosswalks. To the credit of the petitioners, when driving a car in these parts of Stanton that have not been updated, it's a little scary to get out of your vehicle, because on the downhill parts, people are often going faster when you're trying to cross the street, so you're really trying to avoid getting hit. And they mentioned that there are people who are disabled who need help, and they're my neighbors. I want them to have the access to live their full lives. So it seems that there should be a solution here that allows for keeping good public infrastructure that's usable to everyone. Like, we made the systems, we can make them better, and I just hope the city continues its initiatives to hit Vision Zero, and I hope that as we're going through these, we realize we live here together, and a future with safe infrastructure is possible for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, I think I've lost track, was that Jeremiah Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have Gregory Murray, followed by David White. Gregory Miller, if you're online, you can unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for having this meeting today. Thank you for hearing my comments. My name is Gregory Murray. My wife and our daughter, we live in Morningside, and we are in favor of the bike lane improvements on Stanton Avenue. My wife and I have both been riding bicycles in Pittsburgh since the aughts, when we moved here, and we have found that the bike lanes are a great improvement. You know, a lot of this has been said already, but they make it safer for us to be on the street. They make it actually safer. They make us feel safer. Our daughter is two and a half years old. We have a bike with a kid seat. We ride her every day when the weather's a bit warmer and the days are a bit longer. But it makes it a whole lot safer for us to be on Stanton Avenue with her, and we want her to grow up in a multimodal neighborhood. We want her to feel safe. We want her to get on her own bike before too long. We want her to be out there on the street, in a safe way. The bike lane's a great thing. You know, we're, like a lot of parents of two and a half-year-olds, we're figuring out where she's going to be going to school, and Stanton Avenue corridor is gonna be a part of it, one way or another. You know, we were excited about the bike lanes ever since we first heard about it. We went as a whole family to one of the community meetings that DOMA hosted. It's a great thing, and we like the progress we've seen in the city. We hope to see more of it. You know, to bring it back around to the purpose of this meeting, you know, we're a community. We're all neighbors. We all want to help each other, and, you know, again, like the last commenter said, I'm not a civil engineer, I don't have the answers, but all I can tell you is that we love the bike lane. It is safer. It makes our community safer, it makes our neighborhood safer. But, you know, we want everyone to be accommodated, and I suppose that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David White, followed by Jaclyn Lewis.
Good afternoon, Councilman Mosley. Good afternoon, councilperson Gross, to all the council people who may be online, to my neighbors here. Good afternoon, thank you. My name is David White. My full-time job is working with Pogo, the bike-share system. I've met with many of you directly when we talked about expanding bike share in your neighborhoods. So I want to be transparent that I am biased toward expanding bike infrastructure. But today, I'm here as a resident of Stanton Heights. I live on Orinmore Street. If you're coming from the East Liberty-Hyland Park side of Stanton Avenue, going up Stanton Avenue, there's a stoplight at the very top of the hill. That's Orinmore. I just live a couple blocks off there. I travel on Stanton Avenue every single day. My wife and I have five kids. At some point, all five of them have gone to Pittsburgh Public Schools. Currently have three children at Pittsburgh Public Schools, and they all also ride bikes occasionally. But my youngest son, Azaya, goes to school at Dilworth. It's on Stanton Avenue. Our feeder school is Sunnyside, also on Stanton Avenue. And so the passage for my children on Stanton is a primary concern of mine. It's something I think about. It's something I have a deep fear of, of ever getting a phone call that one of them is unsafe. And it brings me incredible joy to be able to say that this year, in 2024, I've been able to ride a bicycle with my six-year-old from our house to his school at Dilworth nearly every day. He has been featured on the Pittsburgh Public Schools website. He's been pictured on the Pittsburgh Public Schools Instagram page and on the Dilworth Community Newsletter. Because a lot of people recognize how important it is for our children and young people to build in some activity in their daily lives, and I'm here to let you know that that has been tremendously improved by the bike lanes on Stanton Avenue. His ability and my ability to travel to school safely and securely in a dedicated bike lane is a phenomenal improvement in our family's lives. And I hope that everyone can absolutely consider, on an individual basis, families with accessibility or adaptive needs. I'd love to be a part of that conversation if it was helpful, but I'm here to say that expanding bike infrastructure, and specifically the hard work that DOMA has done on this street, is a positive thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jaclyn Lewis, followed by Nicole Ambrogio? Ambrogio?
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Jackie Lewis. I live in the 5,400 block of Stanton Avenue since 1989. This design is a good thing, but it's also dangerous in an already busy thoroughfare. It's dangerous for pedestrians. It's dangerous for pedestrians with mobility issues, as well as in some places, it's dangerous for bicyclists as well. I am an MS patient, and so I move slowly. When I get out of my vehicle, I stay close to the vehicle to walk around the other side to take anything that I need to take into the house. But when I get around to the other side of my vehicle, there are these barriers that I have to step over in order to open up my car door and get what I need to get out of there. It's a little bit of a dance some days. So sometimes when I get what I need to get to my house, then I have to turn, but the bike lane is behind me. Now, when bikers see me, when they see me, they ring their bells, they say, "Excuse me," but a lot of times, they don't slow down. And so I'm pinned in this place between my car and these barriers and my home. That's a problem. My next-door neighbor, Beverly, uses Access. Her Access van now has to stop in the traveling lane, and she has to come out, and, you know, I'm a senior, she's more senior than I am, and she moves slowly. Now she has to come out of her home, she has to cross through the bike lane, through the barrier lane, through the parking lane, and then she gets to her Access vehicle. That vehicle backs traffic up some days, almost all the way back to Nagley Avenue. That's a problem. So my consideration, and the way I think of it, is that there were no considerations for certain people who live in that area and who do what they do on a daily basis. Some of our concerns were definitely not considered. So I would ask that we take this back to the drawing board, so to speak, and try to find ways that we can make everybody feel safe in the same space. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicole Ambrogio, followed by William Pavin? Paving? Funny spelling, I'm not sure. Pavin?
Hello, my name is Nicole Ambrogio. I want to take the time to express my frustration with the current situation of Stanton Avenue, specifically the 5,400 block in which I reside. In a blink of an eye, the once-beautiful Stanton Avenue was quickly turned into a chaotic mess. We residents went from having ample parking in front of our houses to debating on whether or not it's even worth leaving the house, because we are not sure if we're gonna find a parking spot when we return. Supposedly, surveys were done to analyze the cars versus amount of parking spots, but these surveys were only taken during two days, during a span of only a couple hours each day, which led to inaccurate results. If the survey was conducted properly at night, the results would have shown an almost full street of parked cars. If you look at Stanton Avenue as it is today, on any given night, you'll be lucky to find even one available parking spot. This project has done nothing to benefit the residents of Stanton Avenue. Instead, it has left everyone feeling abandoned and angry. If we wanted to live in a neighborhood where parking is less available, we would have moved to somewhere like Lawrenceville. We never had an issue with parking near our house. My parents, who are both immigrants, both come from large families, especially with the holidays coming up, they are forced to reconsider hosting family get-togethers because they're unsure if our guests will now park. Drone surveillance was also supposedly used to count the number of spots in the alleyways. While, yes, some residents do have available spots, the houses on Stanton are typically large family houses or multiple apartment units. It's very common for houses to have several cars, some of which rely on the parking in front of our houses on Stanton. There used to always be an assumption that cars and bikes share the road, but now each block has its own set of rules. Sometimes the cars and bikes share the road, sometimes there's a bike lane right next to the driving lane, and sometimes there's a parking lane dividing the driving and bike lane. It's constant weaving in and out with the bikes and the cars. As a resident on Stanton and also a biker, I feel less safe now than ever. Having the bike between a parked car and the sidewalk feels the most dangerous. The fear of someone opening their passenger door and exiting their vehicle and me not having anywhere to go, because I certainly can't jump onto the sidewalk, is a major safety concern. Additionally, I feel like the biking between a parked car and a sidewalk causes me to be invisible to drivers turning onto the cross streets of Stanton. It is only a matter of time before an accident occurs. When residents approach their cars, they have to first walk into the bike lane. I've seen several instances where bikers scream out to the pedestrians, who are just trying to access their vehicle, to watch out, because the bikers can't suddenly stop. It's these fears that now have me avoiding biking on Stanton altogether and using the streets parallel to it. Not all changes of Stanton have been bad. I believe the speed bumps on Stanton have helped decrease the speed of vehicles. I believe the city could have started there and continued to monitor to see what changes could be beneficial. Perhaps adding a stoplight to the intersection of Stanton and Health could have helped. Regardless, I would like the city to remove the current bike lanes, but work with the residents and bikers to provide a new plan that will benefit the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have William Pavin? I'm sorry, I don't understand the spelling, and followed by Jason Ja. We don't have William, maybe? Do we have Jason Ja, followed by Ryan Leverett-Patak?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I would like to start off by saying that the Ghost Bike Memorial at the intersection of Stanton and St. Clair has been mentioned by some previous commenters, and although I did not know William, who the Ghost Bike is dedicated to personally, I cheer up with it every time that I walk past it, because I have been hit by a bus before, and the impact caused me to get knocked off of my bike and end up on the road. And so whenever I see a ghost bike around Pittsburgh, I think about how that could have been me as well, if something had just turned out slightly different in the aftermath of that collision. And I think that reverting Stanton Ave. back to its original state, which is what the petition calls for, would be a disgrace to that memorial and all of the other Ghost Bike memorials in Pittsburgh, because the previous state of Stanton Ave. was overall less safe for bikes. So I acknowledge that, all of the comments from people about how the current state of Stanton Ave. isn't working for them, but I don't think that the solution is going back to how it was before. I often have to cross Stanton Avenue and at the unsignaled intersections between Nagley and Highland, where there's no traffic light to help guarantee a safe period for me to cross the road. And I, from my personal experience, noticed that it's a lot easier to cross, whereas in the past, I've often started to cross and then realized that a car was coming a lot faster than I had originally processed and needed to start running across the remainder of the intersection in order to make it in case that car wasn't going to start slowing down. And I know that many other people who need to cross Stanton Ave. don't have the ability to start running in the middle of their crossing if they end up in a similar situation. So I think any changes to Stanton Ave. that continue making it safer to cross, so that it's not, maybe one day we can reach a state where having to cross Stanton Ave. in order to get to where your car is parked is not a big deal. It's just like a part of life, just as easy as exiting your front door. And I acknowledge that we aren't there yet, but I think we should be trying to move in that direction instead of trying to eliminate the need for anyone to cross Stanton Ave. By adding back parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ryan Leverett-Patak, followed by Barbara Glynn. Do we have Ryan? Ryan, if you're online, can unmute yourself? There you are.
Yeah, hello. Hi, my name is Ryan Leverett-Patak. I've lived in the East End since 2021. I currently live in Bloomfield. I'm here to express my opposition to the removal of the parking-protected bike lane on Stanton Ave., and obviously, my opposition to the reversion of the changes that were made. I bike to work every day. I'm actually in the office right now. I bike downtown. I bike to the grocery store, I bike to my friends' houses, I bike for fun, and I bike to community events. And the removal of the protected bike lane on Stanton Avenue, to kind of boil it down, would make it more likely that I die while biking through the East End. Stanton Avenue is the main way to get from Stanton Heights and Highland Park to East Liberty, and that includes, it's the main way to get to the newly redesigned, bike-friendly Penn Circle. Removing the lane on Stanton Avenue, reverting it back to how it was, would make it more dangerous to get there. And if our infrastructure between neighborhoods isn't connected, it isn't safe. Right now, the stretch of Stanton Ave. that we're talking about is the safest way to get from Stanton Heights and Highland Park to the East End, and for me personally, this is a bit of an issue, because my wife and I are considering buying a house in the East End, in particular, at the 4,800 block of Stanton Avenue. Reversing these infrastructure changes would make it pretty much a non-starter for us to live there, because, to be quite frank, I wouldn't feel as safe riding my bike through the East End, and so why would I want to live there? In addition, I really do hear the concerns about parking, and I want to kind of direct folks' attention to the fact that there are alleyways behind those houses, with the potential for changes to be made in those alleyways, which could make it a more safe loading and unloading zone for people that are in cars, and I'd like to urge the city to... And I'd like to urge the city to keep the, keep the bike lanes as they are because I rely on them every day to get safely to work. And I hope to continue to rely on them for the rest of my time that I live here in Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Barbara Glynn, followed by Devin Lemaker.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your time. My name is Barbara Glynn. I own 5436 Stanton Avenue, and I've owned it for 21 years. It's between Chislet and Negley. It's on the side of the street where parking was eliminated. Revisiting the bike lane installation is not an anti-cyclist campaign. It's to look at the design. To remove everyone's preconceived notions, I lived in Germany for several years and I had a bicycle. Without a doubt, traffic calming measures were needed on Stanton, and as a matter of fact, they're still needed. I've seen people drive past the bus, leaving children off with the signs out saying "stop", and they keep going. I could go on, but I didn't want to take up my three minutes with a litany of all the issues. So, the changes made in August were made to a street to improve travel on Stanton Avenue, as though it were a corridor to get from one place to another, a corridor. There are all kinds of people who live on the street. It is not just a corridor for people to pass through. So the "one size fits all" in this neighborhood may not be the design that works. The neighborhood is 125 years old. It's been through many iterations over the years. It may take a, you may need a closer look and a special design. This design that was installed may work for brand-new construction, and this definitely is not. Probably an oversight on the city's part that they missed the bigger picture. The design works for drivers and cyclists, but it's added more dangers and inconveniences daily to the people who live there. I hate thinking that my tenants are, in their jaywalking, that they're traffic calming measures. It's unsafe at night in the rain. I've had the building for 20 years, so I know what Stanton Avenue is, and I don't want them to be the buffer. I've noticed that, I think, the two cyclists who actually thought of the people on the street. I'm not sure why. May I?
No, I'm sorry, the rules, the rules.
And I ask that you respect the neighbors and the neighborhood of the public community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Devin Lemaker, followed by Samuel Wertz. Do we have, and I kept meaning to let everybody know that there were 47 registered speakers, if you were unregistered and waiting, I apologize. And I'm on number 38, so there still are about 10 or so registered speakers remaining. Do we have Devin Lemaker versus Samuel, or Samuel Wertz? If not, I'll mark them, I'll move on to Helen Perelou. Oh, sorry, thank you.
I was waiting to see if Deborah came up.
You can just give us your name and your neighborhood?
My name is Sam Wertz, and I live on Jackson Street, one block off of the affected Stanton Avenue, part of Stanton Avenue that's been changed. I wanted to express my concerns today regarding the planning and implementation of the Stanton Avenue parking changes in bike lanes. The process and resulting design have been flawed, and residents like myself have been left dealing with unintended consequences every day. From the start, the residents of Stanton Avenue were not adequately contacted about the project. BikePed was tasked with notifying residents, yet they only used the checklist instead of engaging with homeowners directly. If there was a sincere intent to install a bike lane, the process should have been prioritized, gathering input from all of those directly affected. At the meetings, very few residents were present, yet a significant number of Bike Pittsburgh members showed up tilting the conversation. Furthermore, the city conducted an extremely limited parking study twice for just two hours, each on May 5th and May 8th, and these studies did not account for peak parking times during evenings, weekends, and seasonal variations. The city consolidated parking data into one number rather than evaluating each section of Stanton Avenue independently. Their claim around only 40% of the parking was being utilized as misleading, and it contributed to the decision to eliminate parking on one side of the street. The design of the bike lane is problematic and unsafe, and in some areas, the bike lane is outside the parking lane, mid-street, it switches to the inside, which creates a dangerous situation for both bikers and drivers and even pedestrians. This inconsistent layout is unlike anything else we see in the city, and for good reason, it possesses risks to all of those involved: bikers, pedestrians, and drivers alike. The city also failed to consider a few other critical factors: the volume of bus traffic and delivery trucks on Stanton Avenue, the need for access vans, which now park in the middle of the street to assist residents, which obstructs traffic, increased use of alleys like Livery Way where traffic has surged to unsafe levels, disrupting what were once quiet areas. Public buses are frequently forced to drive over the medians due to the narrowed lanes, and delivery vehicles have resorted to parking on sidewalks to make deliveries. Actions that are unsafe for pedestrians, children, and residents alike. The elimination of parking has created chaos. Residents scramble to find spots, often blocking garages and parking alleys, parking and alleys. The increased traffic on neighborhood streets like Baywood, Jackson, Heaths, and Highview have frustrated nearby residents. The lay of Stanton and Negley have become problematic. In addition, of the concrete pad, has caused backups prompting drivers to cut through side streets to avoid delays further disrupting traffic flow. What was the city trying to fix? If safety was the goal, the changes that have made so far have made certain members less safe. Residents now witness access vans, buses, delivery trucks struggling to navigate the poorly-designed lanes. Traffic has increased in alleys on nearby streets, parking is scarce, and pedestrian safety has declined. The changes made to Stanton Avenue were poorly planned, communicated, and executed. Safety could have been improved in simpler ways, starting with the addition of speed bumps, before resorting to a full redesign. The Parking Protected Bike Lane is unsafe, traffic is worse, and the design does not work for all of the residents, pedestrians, or drivers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Helen Perelou, followed by David Sog.
Good afternoon. My name is Helen Perelou, and I live in Uptown. Today, I'm speaking as a parent of a 7th grader at the Environmental Charter School, and I'm also speaking as a volunteer instructor with the Bike ECS Program. This program consists of an after-school bike club and also teaches middle school through high school students how to ride a bike and how to improve their biking skills so that they can safely ride on the city streets. This program serves hundreds of students, many of whom are learning to ride for the first time. In the Stanton Avenue corridor, we have over 100 students from the middle school alone who use the bike lanes during the PE class program. These students are in my care during the time I'm teaching them, so any measures that can be taken to reduce risk and increase safety is immensely important. Having the bike lanes in place has helped define where the students can ride and where cars should drive. I would actually prefer to see real physical barriers defining the bike lanes, as many drivers take the painted lines on the road as mere suggestions, but I appreciate what we have, and I know that having the bike lanes has improved safety. I have experienced the loss of two friends who were killed on their bikes by car drivers. I have witnessed a friend being run over by a dump truck into Oakland near Pitt when he was on his bike. He survived, but with life-altering injuries. I myself have been struck by a car on my bike, and two times on foot, including with my toddler in a stroller. There were no bike lanes in any of these areas where these things happened. I would like to point out that the vast majority of houses within the two blocks of Stanton and Baywood between Chislet and Negley, where most of the petitioners seem to be from, currently have their own private off-street parking in their backyards off the alley. All but five of the houses, that I could tell, have either parking pads or garages on the alley. Of the five that do not, all but one on Baywood and one on Stanton seem to have the ability to have parking by removing a fence or other simple modifications. Is there a way to assist petitioners who do not already have backyard parking to create it? I would support and help them with that. I would just like to know if there is a way that we can help and find another solution besides bike lane removal. I hope that this meeting today is the beginning of a conversation to find a solution that would work for the residents and people who pass through this area on their bikes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Sog, followed by Laura Ambrosio.
How's it? Hi. Good morning.
Oh, you sure did. I see your name twice. Thank you. So we have Laura Ambrosio, followed by Patrick Dowd. Do we have Laura? It was Nicole last time. I just double checked.
Hi, can you hear me?
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You can just say your name for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Laura Ambrosio, and I've lived in Highland Park my entire life. I spent 30 years on Stanton Avenue, where the bike lanes were recently introduced, and for the past 19 years, I have lived just a block away on Jackson Street. My parents still reside on Stanton Avenue. The first sign of changes that came to the straight part of Stanton Avenue were when we saw no parking signs. Initially, we thought, oh, we're getting repaved, but it quickly became evident that a significant transformation was taking place that we had no knowledge of. Within a few days, the street was completely altered. Parking was entirely eliminated on one side, while the other side had parking spaces along bike lanes. The bike lanes were inconsistently placed. Some are located on outside of parking spaces, and the others are protected by parked vehicles, which may not comply with legal standards. Moreover, there is a crosswalk and a bus stop situated in the middle of the crossing bike lanes from park-protected to non-park-protected, creating additional hazards. The introduction of bollard poles in this crosswalk has forced drivers to swerve into the crosswalk, bike stop, bus stop, bike combo, just to navigate around them, increasing the risk of head-on collision, pedestrian accidents, and bike collisions. I'm particularly concerned about what's going to happen when we have adverse weather conditions. As a daily driver on the street, I find the traffic patterns hazardous, raising serious concerns about the design. And the only part of the design I like is the part that actually works, the speed bumps. Perhaps we should have started with this? I have a nine-year-old son, who I recently allowed, started to allow to cross Stanton Avenue, to visit his grandma. However, since these changes were made, I no longer permit him to do so because of safety concerns. And what's ironic is that I emailed the councilwoman Deborah Gross's office, and they stated to me, quote, "The councilwoman's priority for Stanton Avenue Phase 2 is pedestrian safety. These intersections are utilized by a significant number of pedestrians every day, many of whom are schoolchildren," unquote. Clearly, pedestrians were not adequately considered in the design of this crosswalk. I frequently turn onto side streets instead of using Stanton Avenue due to constant obstruction by cars because of the lack of available parking. It's common to see delivery trucks and access vans parked inappropriately on sidewalks, complicating traffic flow and increasing risk. Additionally, many neighbors were unaware of the impending changes. My sister and I collected signatures for this petition, and encountered surprise, anger, disappointment from residents regarding the street's transformation. While the studies the city conducted showed adequate parking in the alleys behind the streets, the reality is that traffic has significantly increased, leading to numerous vehicles blocking the alleyways and the driveways. The city conducted limited studies of sampling parking usage only on Mondays and Fridays during specific times. Just last night, I was in the alley to pick up my mom, because I can't pick her up up front, and a neighbor was parked in front of her driveway. I couldn't park in the driveway, and there was a car coming up and down the street. It was chaos, and this is not the first time it's happened. It is crucial that these modifications be re-
Thank you. Next, we have Patrick Dowd, followed by Vlad Kaplan.
Thank you, councilwoman. My name is Patrick Dowd. I reside at 1015 North Euclid, just a few blocks from the affected areas on Stanton Avenue, and I serve as the Chief Executive Officer for the Environmental Charter School. And I just want to thank the council and the residents for the petition and for the opportunity for all of us to be here to talk about these bike lanes. At the Environmental Charter School, our mission is to educate kids to a high academic standard and to instill in them knowledge and love of the environment. And when we think about the environment, we think about the natural environment, also the built environment, that's partly why we're here today, and the social environment. And we often say that we grow citizens, and our hope there is to graduate students who are going to shape the world to be more sustainable and just. And so it would be appropriate, Laura had handed off Isaiah's testimony to me, so I'm just going to read the last paragraph that our student, who Laura had mentioned earlier, that he had provided some testimony, and then I'll submit this to you. But Isaiah, the closing comments on his statement was, "Pittsburgh is a city with many streets where people are able to park. Sacrificing important infrastructure for the sake of parking spaces seems ill-informed. I know law enforcement approaches might seem unnecessary at first, but I urge you that it'll, I urge you that it'll protect the greater good of Pittsburgh and further solidify the city's environmental standpoint and view on transportation." Thank you, Isaiah. So, just finishing out that testimony. And then I also wanted to just add a couple of more points about the Environmental Charter School. We serve about 1,100 students, 85% of whom reside in the city of Pittsburgh. Our team, our staff, is over 270 employees, over 70% of them reside in the city of Pittsburgh. Laura and Helen and Isaiah talked about, in their comments, talked about our Bike ECS Program. The idea there is to, as you've heard, to encourage kids, to train kids to use bicycles to get around the city in a more sustainable mode of transportation. We're also working to find ways to encourage them to take public transit. We encourage our staff to do the same. And I, myself, live, as I mentioned, on North Euclid. We have two buildings in the vicinity of the Stanton Avenue redesign. Our building in Garfield serves 300 kids, our building in Morningside serves over 180 kids. And so these folks are using these bike lanes every day. We're here, obviously, in support of those lanes. They've made it safer for our team to get to work and get home, they've made it safer for students who are learning to ride and who also ride their bicycles to school. We also hear, though, the residents and their concerns about accessibility and pedestrian safety, and we share those. And as other speakers have indicated, we hope that there'll be ongoing conversation to, A, preserve the infrastructure improvements, but to abate some of the concerns that they've raised. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just also noted, the former councilman, Patrick Dowd, also served on this body for seven years. Thank you, councilman. And next, we have Vlad Kaplan, followed by Sam Hayden. Hayden? Oh, we have Mr. Kaplan online, maybe?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. So, my name is Vlad Kaplan. I'm a homeowner in East Liberty. I live a block and a half from Stanton Ave. And I regularly walk and bike and drive on Stanton Ave, and I love the new bike lane. When riding an e-bike, I use the new lane to visit my friends in Morningside and then to hit up the Bulldog Pub and to get to Upper Lawrenceville, when I don't want to deal with the lazy, with the craziness of Pan Ave. The fact that I'm situated near the East Liberty Boulevard bike lane, the Negley one, and now the station in Stanton ones, have made it so that I can get to most places in the city more safely and generally faster on my e-bike than in my car. I really appreciate the Stanton Ave bike lane as an improvement to my quality of life and as something that makes me safer. When I'm out walking my dog, which is on Stanton, which is most every day, I always notice that Ghost Bike Memorial on St. Clair, and I'm thankful the city has done something to protect people. There was a previous commenter, Lisa, that mentioned that not only was her husband twice hit by a car on his bike, but that her car was struck by someone blasting down Stanton near Sheridan. I'd actually like to see additional traffic calming installed on Stanton between Farragut and Collins and on St. Marie between North Highland and Collins. I also drive my car down Stanton fairly frequently and haven't found any difference in my driving experience. I don't know if I'm a slow driver or what, but I don't feel like I've had to slow down at all. I think the main thing that the bike lane impacts is parking on Stanton Ave. And while I don't believe free street parking directly in front of your house is something people are entitled to, I'm sympathetic to folks with disabilities, for whom traveling a block to get to their car is a significant hardship. In those cases, I think the city should work with the person to come to some arrangement. I noticed that there is an arrangement for that at 5007 Stanton, up the hill. There's a bump out for a handicap spot there, so I feel like we're necessary ADA There's a bump out for a handicap spot there, so I feel like where necessary, ADA spots can be bumped out in exchange for a parking spot on the other side of the street. So I really hope that the city can accommodate that first commenter and the other woman who needed those handicap accommodations. So I hope City Council can accommodate community concerns around safety and folks with disabilities without taking away this new and awesome feature in my neighborhood. Thank you very much. Go Pittsburgh, go Pens.
Thank you. Next, we have Sam Hayden, followed by Mateo Cummings. Sam Hayden? Okay, I'll mark your name. We have Mateo Cummings, followed by Matthew Huber. I'll just note, though, we're at the, near the end of the registered speakers. I will loop through the names one more time, just in case someone was accidentally away from their Zoom. And once we complete those, if there's anyone who didn't register, we will have one minute to speak. So next, we have Mateo Cummings, followed by Matthew Huber. Mr. Mateo? Okay, Matthew Huber? No? Okay, I'm going to loop back through one more time, up to the top. Sean McKillop? No. Carolyn Crans? Andrew Maraz? Elizabeth Hopman? Alex Torek? Timba Azayat Neandemo? William Paveen? I think we don't have anyone left online, do we? I think, Madam Clerk. Okay, great. So I'm just going to open it up, then. If you haven't had an opportunity to speak, and you were not one of the names called, you can come up to the mic, and you can have unfortunately one minute, which, again, I'm going to warn you, goes really quickly. You can just give your name and your neighborhood for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Amanda Como, and I thought I was registered, so now I'm going to have to read very quickly. I'm speaking on behalf of my family, who lives near the intersection of Stanton and Orinmore in Stanton Heights, and I'm here today to express my strong support for keeping the dedicated bike lanes on Stanton Avenue. My husband regularly commutes by bike along Stanton Avenue to Oakland. He also enjoys taking our children to school by bicycle. This safe and sustainable form of transportation has countless benefits to our family and to the community, promoting an active lifestyle, reducing our environmental impact, and fostering independence. Beyond our personal use, the improvements to the Stanton Avenue corridor provide critical safety measures for children and families throughout the neighborhood. Many students attending Dilworth, Fulton, Sunnyside, Obama, Environmental Charter School, among others, use bicycles as their primary mode of transport. Before the installation of these lanes, I often worried about their safety. The bike lanes and traffic calming measures have been essential in reducing the risk of accidents for those who travel this corridor. In summary, let's keep Stanton Avenue moving forward, not backward. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any? There we go. Just give your name and neighborhood for the record.
My name is Annette, and I'm resident of the Highland Park area as well. The main objective here is not to remove the bike lanes. We want to keep the bike lanes, but also do so that it's sustainable for everyone. You know, the bike lanes are a good thing, and then also the speed bumps are an additional thing that help the Stanton Avenue arena, Stanton Avenue area. I think that the overboard, whenever they did the modifications, it just went overboard. You could have done with the crosswalk, you could have done with the bike lanes, and you could have done with the speed bumps. I think you would have addressed the key issues that are an issue on Stanton Avenue, but the accessibility of what was done, I think, is what has made things more difficult and more challenging for people to deal with, for the residents to contend with. So just reassess it and revisit it, but the bike lanes are not the issue. It's just a matter of how they were installed and how they affect everything. So nobody wants to get rid of the bike lanes. Just keep everything in perspective, and I think that kind of got lost with the construction. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Donna Parks, and I live on the 5,400 block of Baywood Street. I've lived there for over 50 years. And with this new pattern on Stanton Avenue, I have noticed an increase, very much increase, of traffic speeding up and down Baywood Street, which is causing an unsafe issue there, because we have no speed bumps. There is also an issue with Hessway, with people, delivery drivers, parking there, blocking access to our garages, people parking in front of our garages that we can't get out of. And I think it's just, I don't know what the answer is, but there should be an answer for both bicyclist and pedestrians, residents, and I think they should be revisited, this whole situation on Stanton Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. I'm Laura Sambuff Paris. My husband and I live in Morningside. I'm a regular bike commuter. The section of Stanton Avenue in question is my primary connection to my workplace, grocery stores, community, and medical care. I feel safer with these traffic calming measures and protection measures for cyclists in place. 10 years ago, I was struck by a car while riding in a part of the city without a bike lane. The driver did not stop. I've had friends die after being struck by cars, and I've contributed to countless GoFundMe campaigns to friends recovering from being hit by cars. Bike lanes protect me and connect me to other bike infrastructure across the city. Without them, safe riding is harder for me to access. I support the retention of the bike lanes, as well as further conversation about access, livability, and safety of the impacted neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? Thank you. Just give your name and neighborhood, please.
Hi, my name is Olivia Ambrosio. I don't speak well English, but I just want to know, you guys to know, we live on Stanton Avenue, and it's been since August, it's been very, very bad. We do have a parking space in the back. Also, I have three grandkids that we have, they use the back of driveway for basketball. Now, we have cars parked there. Like, people block my driveway, block my garage. I can't get out of the garage. There's cars going up and down. Yes, all these people, they live in Morningside, they want to keep the Stanton Avenue for bike lanes. Yeah, it's comfortable for them, but it's been a disaster for us. And I've been there, we lived there since 1976, and we do like to get together for birthday parties, Christmas coming.
I'm sorry, one minute is very brief. We can't give you more time. Thank you for coming down. Do we have any other unregistered speakers who would like one minute to speak? Thank you.
Hello, council. Thank you for having us. Neighbors, thank you for coming. My name is Ted King Smith. I am a Stanton Heights resident. And also, in full transparency, I'm the Education Manager at Bike Pittsburgh, so I can attest personally to biking with young people at the Environmental Charter School on Stanton Avenue before the lanes and after. I can attest to how much more safer, more enjoyable it is for them, but it's also better for myself when I have to bike to work, and my wife, who bikes on those lanes every day. We know there have been deaths on Stanton Avenue, cyclist deaths. We know that young people have died in Pittsburgh this year on the roads. This is something that we don't want to see happen again. Every step that we take forward, when we create traffic calming, when we create facilities for bicycles, is making the streets safer, not just for people to ride bikes, but for everyone, and that is the goal. My mother is 75 years old. She's a cancer thriver, and even she, when she drives, prefers having the traffic calming. It makes her feel safer when she drives, so it's better for everyone.
Thank you. I've been notified that we do have one of the registered speakers has joined us online. I believe it was Sam Hayden, number 45, is on my list. Do we have Mr. or Sam Hayden? I apologize, I keep using gender pronouns, and I'm not supposed to, so I apologize for that. We have Sam Hayden online. Are you there?
Yes.
Thank you. You can just give us your name and neighborhood, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Just very briefly, my name is Sam Hayden. I live in Upper Lawrenceville. I've lived there for about two years, and I regularly use these Stanton Avenue bike lanes, especially to get to work. I frequently ride the lanes to get to grocery options and other places around the city. Certainly, I would not feel as safe biking in the neighborhood, and would prefer that I remain in the city.
Thank you. Is that, are you finished with your testimony? We're not sure if, we can't hear you. I'm not sure if you're still there, or if you're finished. Okay, maybe muted, so I think we might have exhausted our list of registered speakers. Again, if there's anyone who still wishes to testify, who has not testified in the chambers, you can have one minute if you come up to the microphone. No? Okay, well, I appreciate everyone staying with us. I've lost track of the time myself, but it looks like we've heard nearly an hour and a half of testimony. What we usually do is allow any of the members who are with us at the table, if they have any thoughts or response sometime, to speak. Councilman Mosley?
First, I want to thank everyone for coming out, and those who began the petitioning process. You know, it's truly democracy at work, and I really appreciated hearing, you know, the personal accounts, you know, from those on both sides of this issue. And, you know, it's very helpful for us, you know, to go back to DOMA and have conversations. I do know some of the folks who have mobility issues did reach out to the city in the past, and I believe there was a few parking spots created along that corridor for folks who had mobility issues, and I do believe, you know, that those accommodations, you know, can be made for those. But we will definitely, you know, take all this information back to DOMA, who we meet with on a regular basis, to discuss all of the concerns that were raised today, as well as the support as well. But it was, I think, really powerful to hear that, you know, even the folks who have, you know, many criticisms about the infrastructure improvements, that, you know, they are not opposed, you know, to multimodal transit, but were very clear about the negative impacts in their lives that, you know, these infrastructure changes have caused. You know, we'll take that all into consideration as we continue to engage with the community, and I'm sure as we go into the new year, these conversations will continue to ensure that, again, as some folks on both sides of this issue have said very eloquently, you know, about, you know, re-looking at the design and ensuring that we do, you know, maintain that as a multimodal corridor, but also ensure that we address possibly what some might call unintended consequences of the changes that were made. So I thank everyone for coming out, and, you know, our offices are always available to continue this conversation, engage with anyone, you know, who wants to share, you know, their perspective about these infrastructure changes and how we can improve them moving forward.
Thank you. I know it's been a very long hearing, so I'll keep my comments brief as well. I also want to encourage people to always participate in public hearings. I'm glad that we have an option of having both in-person and Zoom now, because I understand it's difficult to get downtown. But it's also, I really appreciate those of you who have gotten here and to be here in person. I think it's good to both be in the same room and hear and see each other. You kind of, it's a fuller experience, being together in person than it is on Zoom, having both attended these things on Zoom and in person myself. I do want to give everyone credit for acknowledging, I heard widespread acknowledgement, that the lower speeds on Stanton Avenue are better, and we have some data that backs that up. Since we have such widespread support for the traffic calming, my next comments were not addressed to anyone here in the public hearing, who I'm sure don't speed on Stanton Avenue, living nearby and being very aware. But we have had citywide such a horrible increase in aggressive driving and driving at higher speeds, and if it weren't true, we probably would not need so much of this very expensive infrastructure on our streets. So I would just like to say, and I think many of us would echo, a call for people to, please, slow down. And as a reminder, the numbers that I have from various national institutes are that, you know, pedestrians, if you hit a pedestrian, if you're driving and hit a pedestrian at 20 miles an hour, you really, there's only a 1% chance that you will kill that person. But at 35 miles an hour, that jumps to 19%. And if you're driving at 50 miles an hour, you know, you're pretty much guaranteed to kill the person that you hit with your car. And even severe injury has a significantly high risk at 23 miles per hour. So, you know, go 25 miles or less when the speed limit is 25 miles per hour, and shame on you if you're speeding. So having said that, I do also want to acknowledge the comments today that I think are really important as we do build out traffic calming, pedestrian safety, and bike lanes across the city. There is, if you haven't seen it, on the city website, fairly easy to Google, is the Bike Plan for the City, so that you can see where dotted lines are, in case you live near one of them, the ones that haven't been built but are intended to be built, right, and have had public input, and is, I think, a plan from about 2020. And then, more specifically, too, Stanton Avenue is a very long avenue that connects multiple neighborhoods. But there really is, I think, what we heard today, is the difficulty in balancing, but the importance of balancing both the blocks, I think someone said it well, where it's, you know, a place and not just a throughway, and also that, especially the smaller children, you know, again, who are not car drivers, right, are, there's a lot of north-south safety issues. And so we're balancing each of those things. So the usage, block by block, the kind of placemaking, or lots of placemaking, block by block, and safety, east-west, kind of throughway, and, but, safety, north-south. So children are crossing both northbound and southbound to schools, and also to school bus stops. And so it's balancing all of those things. So thank you for your input. You certainly have a lot to consider. But if we have no further comments in the room, I think all I need to do is say we are adjourned. Thank you.